Evening. Today is Wednesday, February 9th, and I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. The time is 6:30 PM. Let's say the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Kuzmato?
Here.
Trustee Lucido?
Here.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Treasurer Gillette?
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Viviano?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, we have two proposed add-ons. Add-on number 22, request to approve invoice for IT Support Services, Plant Moran, P L L C, and the amount of $7,052.50. Also proposed add-on number 23, request for variance from engineering standards from Hampton Manor Senior Living. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. There's a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills. Do we have a motion? Move to approve? Support? Any discussion on the bill run? Hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the bill run. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. On to approval of the previous meeting minutes from January 26, 2022. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion on the previous meeting's minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the previous meeting's minutes. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, now we're on to public comment. This is for agenda items only, so if you have a comment to make on one of the agenda items this evening, you may please approach the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. Please state your name and address for the record, and remember you have a three-minute time limit. Also, if you are participating remotely and wish to digitally raise your hand, you will be called on when there is time. So if there's anybody now who wishes to speak on an agenda item? See anybody present who is digital? No? Okay, so no one wishes to make public comment. At this time, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move the consent agenda in its entirety.
Support.
Any discussion on the consent items?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the township engineer. This vote requires no special variance to be granted or implied by approval. Is that correct?
The stormwater agreement?
Yes.
It's in consent? No, it's their standard agreement that we have developers sign for the maintenance of their stormwater system.
And I noticed that there's buried infrastructure for the detention basins?
Yes.
That doesn't require any special approval?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzmato. Any more discussion on the consent? Hearing none, there's a motion by...
Hold on.
Go ahead.
One last thing. On the fire department, item 7B, the request to attend Tyler Technology Conference, I noticed that the chief and another employee will be traveling by car...
Chief joining us remotely.
...to Indianapolis. I Googled that. That's 319 miles one way. I would assume it's going to be over five hours. 10 hours total there and back. Is there a reason why the township is having employees drive such distances rather than just taking a plane for $258 round trip?
Well, go ahead.
Mr. Kuzmato, I'm just, I believe that somewhere in our travel policy, which we have on our list of policies to review and update, it does not allow for travel by airline out of the state.
Really?
I'll review it, but I believe, I recall that from previous years. Not to say that can't be amended.
Well, yes, I'll be voting in favor of this item, but I think that I value the time of the employees plus wear and tear on the equipment, and I think it's something we should revisit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Kuzmato. Any more discussions on consent? Okay, motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the consent agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, tonight we have some public hearings. The first on the list is the public hearing for the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Funding. Before we get that started, Mr. Box, will you give us a little background?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. This is something we do every year. We take a look at folks who wish to receive some of the funds that we are allowed from the Community Development Block Grant Program. The county sets aside a predetermined amount of funds per community within the county. This year, Macomb Township has $32,200. And in past years, that's been spent on items at our senior center as well as distributed to some of the folks that I'm sure will be here this evening and seeking some of that funding. In addition to the community service funding, we also can apply for brick-and-mortar grants. And in that, in past years, we've done a lot of sidewalk ramp ADA improvements throughout the township. Those are also, you know, open for public comment this evening. If anybody has any specific ideas for those, I know we are looking at possibly doing that again.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Box. So I'm going to open the public comment for the public hearing in a moment. Anyone who wishes to speak to it may approach the microphone on the right-handed side of the room. Please remember that there is a three-minute time limit for each presentation. And at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. The time is 6:38. Is there anybody who wishes to speak regarding the community block grants?
I have some handouts. Is that okay to...
Sure. Just hand them to Trustee Oliver, and he'll hand them down. And could you please state your name and your organization for the record?
My name is Stacy Conti, and I'm with Interfaith Volunteer Caregivers. With the number of older adults in Macomb County rapidly increasing, the need for support services due to frailties of age, chronic health conditions, or disabilities is growing dramatically and will continue to do so well into the future. For 29 years, our organization has been providing free basic assistance to hundreds of frail, older, and physically challenged adults, helping them remain safely in their homes with the help of over 200 volunteers. Such assistance has been helping older and disabled adults with transportation, chores, respite breaks, errands, and loneliness. These opportunities provide fulfilling experiences for those who wish to volunteer, as well as support for those in need. The CDBG Safe at Home Project of IVC is part of our larger chore and repair program for older and disabled adults. The project was developed to provide additional chore and repair services in communities that allocate funding for this purpose. The project allows us to assist low-to-moderate-income seniors and physically challenged adults with indoor and outdoor chores, minor home repairs, and routine housekeeping. We identify individuals who cannot do these tasks on their own and with limited resources, and prioritize those with the greatest need. We are requesting the CDBG funds to increase the number of low-income citizens we can reach to grow our program, as well as coordinate the volunteers who do these services. In 2021, even during the pandemic, we were able to serve almost 450 clients, with almost 150 being served through the Safe at Home program. With this funding year half over, we have already almost doubled the amount of completed tasks in Macomb County compared to the number projected. We are confident, it is due to the addition of the CDBG funding we received for this funding year. We are requesting CDBG funding this upcoming year so we can maintain a pattern of increasing the number of tasks completed and help residents of Macomb Township. The appreciation for the assistance is heartwarming from seniors everywhere. Examples of this type of help may be replacing locks, washing windows, and installing smoke alarms. Thank you to the board and everyone here tonight. Any dollar amount granted is greatly appreciated in our program, and we thank you for the funds you granted to us for this current year we're in as we hope to continue to partner with you going forward. If you know of any seniors who might utilize our services, feel free to let them know to call our office or visit www.ivcinfo.org, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have anybody else who wishes to present for the CBDG? Sure. Good evening. You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Board of Trustees. My name is Jennifer Fisher, and I'm the Development Director for Maggie's Wigs for Kids of Michigan. We have generously received support from you before, and we are back again because this is our 19th year of service, and we provide wigs and support services to children in Michigan who are between the ages of 3 and 18, who are experiencing hair loss due to cancer or any other disorder. And all of our services are available at no charge to them. So from Macomb Township, we've actually helped almost 20 children in your community. And so we are here tonight to ask for $1,000 in CDBG funding. If you would generously consider that request, we can help another child and their family in your community. And so what we offer is we start with a custom-made wig to help their self-esteem. But then we also have a wellness center in place where they can come and enjoy all kinds of social activities with their friends. So that can range from art and music therapy. We have meditative yoga, fitness classes, nutrition courses, a Rais therapy garden where they can sit and relax. We have an enchanted tea room where they can celebrate with their friends, like end-of-chemo parties, life celebrations, you name it. So we wrap the kids in love and warmth. We help them feel better about themselves. And if there's any Macomb Township family out there who does need our services, they can find us online. They can go to www.wigsforkids.org, or you can reach us at 586-772-6656. We're also looking for great volunteers. So if any of you ever have some spare time and you want to come volunteer and help the kids, we welcome your support. Or to anybody who wants to grow their hair out and donate, we can take that too, and everything will help the children. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any questions? We're good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone remotely who wishes to make a presentation? No. Okay. That is the last presentation. I'm going to close the public hearing. Time is 6:44 PM. All right, moving on to our second public hearing of the evening. We're going to do one on the ADD Resolution. We located at 17201 Leonie Drive. Mr. Pierce, can you give us a little bit of background before you open the public hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Board Members. On January 12th, the Township Board approved a public hearing for an industrial development district for Unit 27 of the Regency Commerce Center, which is located at 17201 Leonie Drive. The establishment of this district will allow the developer to come at a future date and have whoever occupies the structure that they put up be able to apply for a tax abatement, should they choose to do so. This is a vacant parcel. In such, once this is done, the individual who owns the parcel is going to come back before us and request a speculative building, which will then save that right for whichever tenant decides to move in at time, should they choose to apply for a tax abatement. The request right now is that you approve a district, which by law is required in order for a tax abatement to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce.
Thank you.
So at this time, if there's anyone... I'm going to open the public hearing. The same procedure is going to apply. Please approach the microphone on your right. There's going to be a three-minute time limit for each comment. The public hearing for the ADD is open, and the time is 6:45 PM. I don't see anyone present who wishes to make a comment. Is there anyone remotely who wishes to comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right, seeing as we have no comment on this public hearing, we are going to close it, and the time is also 6:45 PM. Thank you, Ms. Pierce.
You're welcome.
And our last... Okay. Oh, I got to do poll first. So do I have a motion to develop, to create the ADD district located at 17201 Leonie Drive, parcel 0817-344-027?
So moved.
Support? Any discussion? The motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Lucido, to establish an industrial development district located at 17201 Leonie Drive. Members, please, I'm sorry, roll call. Clerk Posey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzmato?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. All right, moving on to our last public hearing of the evening. It is a request to adopt an amended resolution for the street lighting special assessment district for the Village of Logio's condominium. Mr. Van Tiflin, will you give us a little background?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. This is to amend a resolution that was established by the Township Board a little bit over a year ago. The developer is requesting an additional light at the entrance to the development. We have gotten our estimates from DTE. Developers deposit the money with the township to cover the construction cost. All this amendment does is simply changes the value of the annual lamp charges in the SAD resolution. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. The time is 6:47. So if anyone wishes to speak on this SAD request, please approach the microphone on the right. I don't see anybody. Anyone remotely wishing to comment on this?
No, sir.
No. Seeing that there is no one wishing to make public comment, I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:48 PM. So at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt the resolution to amend the street lighting special assessment district for the Village of Logio's condominium.
So moved.
Support. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Township Engineer. How many years has it been since we've looked at the ordinance regarding street lighting? Been five or six years?
More than that, I'm sure.
Any inclination that it needs to be updated or reviewed?
We don't seem to have any issues with, you know, the process that has been set up. Where we struggle sometimes is with DTE and getting the estimates on time, you know, for the developments to be completed, because they don't normally look at this until their infrastructure is designed for the development itself. But as far as our process goes and the assessments, no. Now, we do need to make a change with regard to how we're charging. We need to update those rates, but that will come at a later date.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzmato. Any more discussions? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Trustee Lucido, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to adopt the amended resolution for the street lighting SAD district for the Villages of Logio's condominiums. Clerk Posey, we call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Kuzmato?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. All right, moving on to new business. The next item is a request from the Parks and Recreation Department to purchase a tractor for Macomb Corners Park in the amount of $29,367.06. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mr. DeCaro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Board Members. Parks and Recreation Department is requesting permission to purchase a tractor to be used at Macomb Corners Park. We'd like to purchase a Kubota LX 2610. We're recommending we purchase the tractor from Weingart Supply Company in Utica for $29,367.06. Kubota is a part of the Sourcewell Cooperative Agreement. Weingart has the most competitive price for a Kubota tractor. This is a national-approved contract. I've included the pricing and the confirmation of process memo from the purchasing specialist. This is a budgeted item, and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. Any questions or discussion?
I have one question. Is this replacing a tractor that we already had, or is this a new one to make?
This would be a new one.
Okay, and this is to just improve the speed and efficiency?
Correct. Ball diamonds, stitching, all that kind of stuff.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have one question. How many years do you expect this piece of equipment to be in service? And the one, how many others are in service currently at Macomb Corners?
There is none in service right now. I would suspect, and maybe Trustee Oliver could help me better. What do you think?
15, 20 years?
If you take care of them, you got 15 easily. If you take care of them. That's the secret.
Which we will do.
And I've watched a lot of the equipment at the parking rec, so keeps a good eye on who's able to drive it. You know, they're not toys, so, and they're well aware of that. So, yeah, that could easily last 15 years.
Do we run green or red?
That's all I have, Mr.
Green or red do we run?
This is orange. We call these pumpkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzmato. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Lucido, supported by Treasurer Gillette. I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the purchase of a tractor from Macomb Corners Park in the amount of $29,367.06. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Board.
We got item 12. We have a request to adopt, I'm sorry, we have a request to approve the update to an AMI reading system to be purchased from Ferguson Waterworks Meter and Automation Group in the amount of $410,323.79. We have a motion.
So moved. Support.
Mr. Wanglin?
Thank you, Supervisor Viviano and Board Members. Water and Sewers in front of you tonight, requesting to upgrade our meter-reading equipment. The current meter-reading equipment is basically old, outdated, being phased out, if you will. The reading devices, the handheld guns, are not repairable anymore. Basically, it's an old, antiquated system. In front of you tonight is a proposal from Ferguson Waterworks outlining what the upgrade would entail. The price is broken out on page three, as well as several bullet points on page two of the proposal outlining or highlighting some additional perks that this updated equipment could give our system. Not all of these bullet points are applicable to Macomb Township, but I would say most of them would be. So Water and Sewers recommending we approve this in the amount of $410,323.79. And we are available to answer questions. I might add, Steve Daniel from Ferguson Waterworks is with me tonight to answer technical questions that I'm sure I would probably stumble on at this point. And he is the AMI specialist for Ferguson. And I might add, we do purchase our Neptune parts and meters through Ferguson, which is our dealer here in Michigan.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Do you have anything to add? I think some questions might have been shared with you, if Jerry was able to get them over to you, that some of our board members had.
Do you have those printed?
I do.
Good evening. Thank you, council members. So I'll just start from the top. Some of these questions I'm going to be able to answer, and some of them apply specifically to your situation, which Jerry may be able to answer more than I will. Will the water department staff be reduced? That, again, is completely up to the township.
I believe the answer to that would be no.
Typically, typically, when a move to AMI is done, it doesn't reduce the amount of staff. It just allows them to focus their efforts in other areas. Everybody's being asked to do more with less people, and this will allow them more time to do those things. The, what employees are currently reading meters? That's another Jerry question.
Yeah, typically, we have about 30,000 accounts. We read about 10,000 accounts meters per month. And right now, that is accomplished by two employees, which take roughly between two and three days per month. So this equipment will eliminate that task right there.
Okay.
The what improvements to service, what improvements to service to customers does this make? And what is the benefit to the township? So what AMI will give you is hourly data for all of your accounts, and that basically allows you to be more proactive with your system to identify leaks, you know, in a matter of days rather than quarters. You know, you're only reading once a quarter. You're not seeing those, and by then, the resident could have a very high water bill and then, of course, be extremely unhappy about that. So it provides the township with the information to get ahead of that and be more proactive, like I said, as well as backflow and no-flow, which in essence is a tamper alert, which catches if anybody decides to tamper with their meter and, you know, lower their bill.
The other thing we get occasionally is what I'll call a dead meter, you know, and that will, that will help, this will help us identify that as well.
And ultimately, what this is doing is allowing the township to have the information to eliminate a lot of the things that would require them to create a work order and have to physically drive to a house to find out why there's a high bill complaint, find out why the, you know, if the meter's working or not, why you didn't get a read when you drove around, that type of thing. So it reduces truck rolls, it reduces the amount of employee time spent troubleshooting these items. It can be used for move-in and move-out, final reads, things like that, without having to, you know, go out at all. You can do it right from the township hall, right from the billing desk.
Mr. Chairman, these are my questions, and they're being answered partially. I request permission of the Chair to ask the questions in order, because many of these issues, I wanted to know the frequency that occurs in the township. How often has a meter been tampered with, impacting revenue and water loss, for example? Permission of the Chair to...
Chair.
Sure, anytime.
As far as, as far as frequency of occurrence, I would say we probably average between five and 10 per month.
Is that high or low in your estimation for 30,000 customers?
I would have no way of knowing what normal would be, if you will.
Well, Jerry, maybe we can reference Mr. Kuzmato. We had one incident in particular. What was the total loss on that one when we finally caught it?
That speaks to his next question, I believe. You know, we're dealing with a homeowner right now that we think probably stole in the area of a little bit over $9,000 bucks, if I recall him.
Yeah, I think you're right.
So we're dealing with one of those right now.
Could you tell the board how that occurred? Was he reversing the meter? Had the meter seized up? Had the meter seized up, or was malfunctioning?
I would, I would caution we don't be too specific, because we don't want anybody to get any ideas, so.
I would agree with that, actually.
In the vaguest terms possible.
You beat me to the punch.
Let, let's just say the meter was tampered with.
Okay. Now, actionable data, that bullet point says that there'll be 720 hourly reads. My question is, is that per month?
That's correct, yes. It's, it's an hourly read, so based on 30 days in a month, 24 hours a day, that's where you get the 720.
Now, from doing my research online, I understood that AMR was where a vehicle would drive through a neighborhood and take readings. You mentioned something about using handheld meter readers.
Right.
So can you clear that up for me?
So the handheld gun, if you will, is in the truck with the employee driving the township streets.
So he's, or she's not getting out of the vehicle to?
Correct, they are not.
All right, and, okay. And that, that brings us to bill, reduction in bill forgiveness. Now, I never even thought, the thought never crossed my mind, and I had a sump backup system that worked on municipal water pressure, and I didn't know that my sump had broke until I got a bill for $600. Is there such a thing as bill forgiveness, or when a faucet malfunctioned and there was a ice fountain in my backyard?
That scenario is not applicable to Macomb Township.
Okay, so the question is, what, under, how often is bill forgiveness, quote unquote? What, what is that? And under what facts does the township offer bill forgiveness to a customer?
I think I can offer, we don't, we don't do that in Macomb Township. That particular bullet item is from the materials, because maybe in some communities they do. But in our community, we do not.
I mean, as cold, as cold as this sounds, we have to be held accountable to GLWA and that master meter, so I need to hold these types of scenarios accountable as well.
I, I appreciate that, because we were paying for that water. We, we approved on the bill run over a million dollars. Are there any other bullet points that are inapplicable?
I would say no.
Okay. How many, it says it reduces the truck rolls, lessening the chance for accidents and workers' comp claims. How many accidents have there been reading the meters?
I would say pretty much none to my, to my recollection. I mean, the staff, the department has got a pretty good driving record, I would say.
And likewise, no workers' comp claims, then? Because there's no injuries?
That'd be correct.
And the expenditures, $410,000. The Board listened to a great number of complaints regarding Verizon 5G cell towers and radio frequency radiation. Is that the, is the signal that's used to read the meters, radio frequency radiation?
The, the radios that are currently on each building are what actually transmits a radio frequency, and those are already on all of the buildings in the township. The devices on this proposal are to collect the reads, so they're not transmitting any signal other than to send a packet of data every six hours. And it's just a cellular signal, so it's just a 4G transmission, just like your cellphone.
So there's going to be poles strategically located throughout the township to pick up signals? So the, the water meter on my home, which is a Neptune meter, but the device is, is that bursting signal constantly every hour, then?
So the, that radio will transmit every 14 seconds, 100-milwatt signal. And then, the newer versions of the radio will also send a, we call it an AMI or a fixed-network signal, every seven and a half minutes of one watt.
Okay.
One watt, the one watt signal, which is the stronger of the two, is eight times lower than the FCC recommendation for radio transmissions.
So this is for the receivers? Not necessarily, there's not going to be any changes to any equipment on the homes? Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And how many employees currently do the truck rolls?
Currently, we use two employees per month to read, read meters. And that entails two to probably a partially of a, a third day.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Mr. Chair? Just have a, a question, I guess Jerry. If, if we make this purchase, is this a kind of one-time purchase? Or is there a corresponding maintenance charge that would be associated with it annually?
And that's, that's in your packet as well. That's on page three. There is an annual fee, just like any other software system program. But there, there will be an annual fee, yes. And that is outlined on page three of the proposal.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one last question. In your opinion, Jerry, how, how much does you think this will save the township for the investment of $410,000? I mean, will it's?
I have no, I, no way of putting a dollar value on that.
And one of the main purposes, again, is to also monitor customers irrigating during peak hours, so Great Lakes Water Authority rates can be kept under control under their guidelines. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, this could be used as, as a tool to keep an eye on things like that, sure. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but, like, I'll have the ability, we'll have the ability to see if, say, your house is watering out of, out of, out of the watering ordinance, yes.
And I understand that Shelby Township went over to this, or is going over this over a nine-month period of transition?
Shelby Township has already implemented the system.
Any other municipalities in the area other than Shelby?
Madison Heights, Southfield, Novi, Washington Township. Chesterfield's also looking into it right now, and then there's several more in other areas, Dearborn, Kalamazoo, Sterling Heights.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kuzmano.
Couple questions. One, how long, if this contract was awarded, how long would it take to install all this, to get it up and running?
Typically, the lead time on the materials is like six to eight weeks. I also have to worry about the lead times for the poles, for my subcontractor, to install them as well. I don't know that exactly time right now. But typically, we'll say three to four months, to be conservative.
Will the, being that you said the poles, will they be in an easement, or will they be, will these apparatus be able to be put on other poles? We got to put a separate pole there?
Typically, not on other poles, because they're usually not tall enough. We could either put a pole in or use an existing asset as well, if there happens to be another tower, like a radio tower, cell tower that you have access to. You can use those, water towers, anything like that that's tall enough can be used, as long as there's not an interfering signal on that tower.
So in one square mile, how many poles would be?
Eleven. Eleven.
Eleven poles, per square mile?
Eleven throughout the township.
Oh, total?
Yes, total.
Okay.
And I think we've identified all 11 will be on township properties.
Okay. All right. And is, is the hardware available? That seems to be a problem with stuff today.
Yeah, that lead, that.
You can't get it.
Yeah. That lead time of six to eight weeks is the, is the current lead time for that material, yes.
And you don't have to go into the homes? Do it all from the outside?
This isn't at homes at all. This is the, just around the town, on township property, putting up the collectors to collect the reads that are already mounted on the homes.
Okay. Thank you.
One, one last question.
Sure.
This is a one-way signal, correct? One, the transmission is from the unit on the home to the collector, and there isn't a confirmation signal that goes back?
No, it is one way to the collector, and then the collector, like I said, every six hours, will send that packet of data to the software and then backfill all of that hourly data.
That is my last question, and I promise.
I have a quick question for Mr. Wanglin. You mentioned that the devices you're currently using have reached their life expectancy. So if we weren't to go with this, what would be the other option?
Want me to answer that? So the, the, the software that, that's being proposed, it needs to be migrated to anyway, because the software you're currently using has ended support, and there's no updates for it. So if something were to happen, like you upgraded to Microsoft, or Windows 10 or 11, that might not be compatible anymore, and there's no upgrade path for it. So you're going to have to go to the Neptune 360 software and the AMR version versus the AMI, and you would have to also purchase the MRX and the belt clip that are on there to do the reading, because the handhelds are also end-of-life and not compatible with the app that is used.
Okay, thank you.
This is your supervisor. I believe we've discussed with, with Beth about not touching, or not upgrading that particular computer until we're done with this.
Okay, right.
One question. On that annual subscription, it looks like it's $2.05 per unit. I'm, I'm assuming, so 61,000, that's per year? As part of, does that get passed on directly to the account? Or is that part of our operating budget as the fee that we already charge?
That'll be part of our budget.
Okay. All right. And then this other one, this professional partnership program, an additional 22,000, that kicks in after year one, or, and that's just like a maintenance contract, or what is that?
Yes, that's a maintenance contract for the gateways. It's not mandatory.
Okay.
You can go à la carte as well and just pay for repairs if needed as you go.
Are most of the other municipalities on that program, or do they choose to do it on their own?
That program hasn't been available until more recently, so most of them are not, actually.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lucido.
I guess one final thing I might add is, is this is in the Water and Sewer currently-approved budget.
Correct. Okay, any more questions? All right, we have a motion by, lost my place. Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the update to the AMI reading system in the amount of $410,323.79. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Oh, we got another one. Item 13 is a request to approve the 2022 to 2027 five-year Water and Sewer Capital Improvement Program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Supervisor Viviana and board members. Water and Sewer's in front of you again tonight, asking for approval to approve the, the CIP program for the upcoming five-year period. This, this CIP needs to be approved for preparing for the Water and Sewer budget for the upcoming fiscal year, as far as establishing Water and Sewer rates. I believe the Board has seen this is in a whole, in its entirety last Friday, as well as the three full-time officials reviewed this, I want to say, two weeks ago, possibly.
Yes.
And so this has been gone over quite thoroughly, and Jim and I are available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Any questions?
I have a few questions. As I understand it, there's no scaling that goes on, or hierarchy of whether or not a repair is critical? And if we did use that terminology, what critical would mean versus necessary? Is there any thought in the engineering department or Water and Sewer to developing a hierarchy and a prioritization of work that needs to be done on infrastructure?
I think these projects have already been given that scrutiny, and that's why they are on the CIP where they are.
So, let me see if I can help. For, so for the sewer system, so the, the items that we talk about with, with regard to maintenance, we send a camera through the sewer. Those cracks or defects that we see are actually scored. And, yeah, we go through a process of evaluating that and comparing it to, if that particular piece of pipe fails, how many basements do we flood? What effect does that have, you know, on the downstream or the upstream customers? So that is all done as part of that evaluation. Then, when we go in and say what sewers we're going to repair, what sewers we're going to line, what sewers we have to open cut to repair, those scores are taken into consideration. And the ones that are more important and have a, in worse condition, get the higher score, and they end up being a priority on, on the list. We go through a similar process with water. Water's a little harder, because you can't get into the pipe. So you're more, with regard to water, you're more looking at how many water main breaks do you have in a particular, you know, year? Or what areas are we experiencing the, the most trouble? We also have pipes that are in the system that are, you know, older, six-inch pipes. They're not, they don't meet our, our current standard. We also have projects in here that are related to road projects. We don't want our water main sitting underneath a five-lane road. So those really don't score, but they're necessary for us to do in order to keep the system at a point where we're not spending extra money if we have a water main break underneath a five-lane road that was just built, and we got to replace it, and we're spending six figures to replace the road. So it's a, there's a scoring system, but there's also the practical side of it, where you're, you're evaluating with, in the big picture.
Okay, and these repairs will make sure that we're not in violation of any federal laws or state regulations?
We, we have, we get permits where they're necessary, and, you know, all of the repairs that are done are inspected by the Water and Sewer Department.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzmano. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Trustee Lucido, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the Water and Sewer five-year CIP. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Mr. Wanglin. Moving on to item 14. We have a request to promote Michael Rickett to the position of Water and Sewer Supervisor. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Tabaka.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. I'm here to recommend a promotion in the Water and Sewer Department. The Board of Trustees authorized HR to initiate the recruitment process for this position of Water and Sewer Supervisor due to her retirement. This position was posted in compliance with the Ask Me CBA agreement. There were two internal audit, or audits, applicants for this position. These two candidates were interviewed on February 2nd by myself, Jerry Wanglin, Ed Coning, and Ron Steinbrink. And we are recommending Mike Rickett for this position. Mike is currently a lead utility worker and has eight years of employment with the township. Thank you for your consideration of the matter. If approved, the promotion will go into effectively. And this is a budgeted position.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions? Hearing none, we have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Nevers, to promote Michael Rickett to the position of Water and Sewer Supervisor. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the next item. We have a request to approve an extension of time for the preliminary plan at Catrona, Cortona Park, which is on Perpinal Parcel ID 0805100021, located on the south side of 26 and the east of Romeo Plank. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. They are seeking an extension of time for their preliminary plan. This is a small residential subdivision. preliminary plan. This is a small residential subdivision just south of 26 Mile and just east of Romeo Plank. It will connect to the neighboring Villa Palmetto subdivision, just 12 units. This was approved February 10th, 2021 for their preliminary plan approval. That is good for one calendar year, so they are about to expire and they're seeking a one-year extension. All internal departments have reviewed this and are in favor of this and the planning commission voted unanimously to suggest a, or recommend a one-year extension.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions? Hearing none, we have a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the extension of time for the Cortona, Cortona Park, permanent parcel ID 0805-1000-021. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the next item, we have item 16, which is a request to accept a FEMA grant in the amount of $16,440.80. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, so this item, I think as said in the board memo, is to accept a FEMA grant, which is, the intent is to purchase PPE for the fire department when they're responding to COVID-19 issues. Is there any questions or discussion? Okay, we have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Lucido. Did I get that right?
Oliver, supported by Nevers.
Supported by Nevers, I'm sorry, I wrote down the wrong one. Motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Nevers, to accept the FEMA grant in the amount of $16,440.80. Members, please vote. Yeah, that sounded wrong. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, we have a request to purchase structural firefighting gloves in the amount of $7,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Chief, this is Chief Phillips. I am on.
Sorry, chief, I didn't know you were joining us. Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm logged in. So I, the seating, I'm requesting your approval to purchase 70 pair of structural firefighting gloves. The current gloves that we have were purchased in 2018. The purchasing specialist obtained quotes, three quotes that ranged in price from $7,000 to $8,260. It's my recommendation to accept the lowest quote of $7,000. The purchase was included in the current budget. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any discussion?
One thing.
Go ahead.
Are these typically only good for three or four years? Is that standard?
Yeah, that's about the average, like, span of them.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, hearing no more discussion, motion by trustee Lucido, supported by treasurer Gillette, to approve the purchase of structural firefighting gloves in the amount of $7,000. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 18, we have a request to approve the final balancing change order, which is number 15, for the public safety building, which is actually a reduction of $96,677.50. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Chief?
Uh, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, as the owner representative for the Joseph Cost Public Safety Building, I'm requesting your approval of the final balancing change order number 15. Change order 15 consists of several items that were necessary in order to complete the project and I'm pleased to state that this final change order results in a $96,677.50 reduction in the contract. This will officially complete the construction project that started in 2016 and construction that started in the spring of 2019. It's been an honor to serve and represent the township as the owner representative and I'm proud of the finished project and I'm even more proud of the fact that it was completed under budget. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, chief. Any questions? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the final balancing change order in a, for, as a reduction of $96,677.50. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 19, we have a request to schedule a public hearing for the establishment of an IDD at 620616024 Angelo Drive, parcel ID 0818400025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Spears.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. Before you, we are requesting to schedule a public hearing for a establishment of another industrial development district. The difference between this one and the previous one is that there is an existing structure on this site. However, they are adding, excuse me, more than 23,000 square foot in addition to it and the district that will be established will just cover the new construction and will allow that company to then apply for a tax abatement.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you.
Any discussion or questions? All right, hearing none, we have a motion by clerk Posey, supported by trustee Lucido, to establish, to schedule a public hearing for the establishment of an IDD at 16024 Angelo Drive, parcel ID 0818400025. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 20, is a request to authorize the treasurer to execute legal agreements necessary to collect the 2022 schools' property taxes for parcels within Macomb Township on behalf of Chippewa Valley Schools, New Haven Community Schools, Uta Community Schools, Lance Cruz Public Schools, the Macomb Intermediate School District, and Macomb Community College. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
He would like to give me the.
Oh, treasurer. Go ahead.
So as the board knows, historically, the township has collected the taxes on behalf of the school districts, on behalf of the ISD, on behalf of the Macomb Community College. We, several months ago, set the rate, which is continually, which paid to the township on behalf of those, those entities to collect their taxes. Those entities have asked us to collect their taxes on their behalf again this year and this would give us the authority to sign those contracts.
Thank you, treasurer Gillette. Happy to answer any questions. Any discussion or questions for treasurer Gillette? Okay. We have a motion by trustee Lucido, supported by trustee Nevers, to authorize the treasurer to execute legal agreements necessary to collect the 2022 schools' and property taxes for proper, parcels within Macomb Township on behalf of all the school districts and the community college. Members, please vote. Motion passes 601 with trustee Kuzmao abstaining. Moving on to item 21, we have a request to replace the fixed seating in the boardroom and purchase 81 Grafton side chairs from Office Express in the amount of $14,471.46. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support. Fellow board members, this is the first part of a project that we've discussed. We discussed it at the working session. We have bids out for renovations of the basement to improve our ability to run the election season and have more space. We also want to do the same thing with the boardroom by removing the fixed seating and putting in armchairs in their place. We'll be able to use this as flexical space, not only for elections, but for any purpose. When the time comes, the space is largely unused during the day and this will give us the opportunity to have larger meetings, use it for a variety of purposes. So happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Mr. Chairman, how many seats are the fixed seating currently?
We have 140 currently. We're proposing to add 80 chairs. We bought one extra for 81 we're going to purchase. With the knowledge that at any time we can add folding chairs and increase capacity when we need to, we didn't see the need to propose investing any more into the more expensive chairs at this time because 99 times out of 100, we only have about 20 or 30 people in the gallery.
Are the, is it anticipated that the fixed chairs are going to be removed?
Yes. We know that for sure when the clerk takes over the space for elections, those chairs can be cleared out, moved to the basement. This whole room can then service residents for voting and the other responsibilities that she has. I can tell you, since I've been here, we've had a couple of large meetings where we would have used the space, brought in tables and cleared out, cleared out, you know, a lot of the chairs and we just didn't have space that big to meet in around.
I guess my question is, are we going from 140 seats to 81 seats?
Normal, the normal capacity, yes, but if there's any, I plan on keeping folding chairs in the back two closets and if at any time we need more seating, they'll be right there. We can expand.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I got a question. I've asked you before, you know, I'm in love with the seats, so.
You're the only one.
But I know, I know.
I will, I will personally have one embroidered with your name and delivered to your house.
Not that long. But is there any way we could try to at least put them at auction, maybe to get something for them?
I can ask the purchasing specialist to list them. I'm likely that we'll find a taker for used stadium seating.
You might be surprised. Some other communities that are sitting on wood.
I'd be, happily be surprised if somebody were to take those off our hands.
Okay, we'll see. And then the other question I got, being that we're going to replace the seats, so now when you pull that seat out, there, there's a, there's a pin that's in the, in the cement.
There is, and I, I've spoken with our, our maintenance department. They're going to grind all the bolts off, smooth the floor out. There will be holes in the carpet. We intend to take the carpet that's up here and this is all peel and stick carpet. We can move it then down there. And then, especially since we have a constant trip here, it's all the same shade, we're going to put a different shade of carpet up here. We won't have that trip hazard anymore. That part's relatively inexpensive. It's, it's actually underneath, under my budget, so it wasn't presented to the board, but that part will take place.
I'm thinking in my head, this, being that we're doing this, maybe now is time. This carpet's getting pretty old, pretty worn. Maybe we should just replace the old carpet. Is it in the budget that you could?
We didn't anticipate it. I mean, it's not that expensive to replace the carpet, but I don't think it's that bad. We don't, and we don't.
You're going to have all these little holes there, right?
But we're going to re.
You're going to bring this up.
Right. It's going to look great when it's done, I promise.
Okay, because I know you're a carpet expert.
This carpet doesn't get nearly as much wear as the carpet in the other parts of the building, so.
I, I'm, I'm already going to pre-approve that it's, you need carpet. Don't call me, just get it.
All right, I understood, understood. Charlie's a yes, I need carpet. All right, any other questions? All right, we have a motion by clerk Posey, supported by treasurer Gillette, to replace the fixed seating in the boardroom, purchasing 81 Grafton side chairs from Office Express in the amount of $14,471.46. Members, please vote. My, motion passes unanimously. Next item is one of our add-ons. It's a request to approve an IT support invoice from Plant and Marant in the amount of $7,052.50. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So this item, as said in the board memo, this is from when we went out for our RFP for a new IT services provider. We engaged the services of Plant and Marant to, who has a IT audit department. One of their senior level staff was able to participate in all the interviews, do research, provide us with a ton of background on the softwares each companies were proposing to use for our security and give us kind of the latest and greatest and what's in the market. Also information that without his assistance, we would have never had been able to get on our own. So it was very valuable and it was worthwhile having, in my opinion. So with that, I'll take any other questions any of the board might have. Okay. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by clerk Posey, to approve the IT support services from Plant and Marant in the amount of $7,052.50. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the last item of the evening, we have the second add-on, which is a request for a variance from the engineering standards for Hampton Manor Senior Living. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Uh, Mr. Van Tiplen.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and board members. The developer of this particular site is requesting that they be allowed to store the detention volume that is required on the surface of the parking lot instead of an open detention basin that would typically be required under the engineering standards. There's a configuration of the site, there's a county drain that's, that's on the site. It's a L-shaped piece of property. There's a large building on it. They want to store in the, on the surface of the parking lot. We occasionally get these requests in, in these situations. We're, for the most part, okay with, with this type of a request as long as the water that's stored in the parking lot isn't to a point where it's going to flood a car and emergency vehicles can get in and out. So there are parameters that I've listed in, in my correspondence with the board where the, any of the parking spaces, you wouldn't have more than 0.7 feet of storage in the parking space and then a foot over the catch basins in the center aisle as you're driving in and out of the site. We've had discussions with the design engineer. They're confident that they'll be able to meet those requirements, so we are recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiplen. Any questions or discussion?
I just have one question. Is this just a cost-saving measure for them or?
It, it's more of a space issue. There's not a lot of green space where you would be able to place a detention basin on this particular property, so they're choosing to, to do it in this, in the parking lot.
Yeah, thank you.
So Jim, would it be, would it be fair with the new stormwater standards to expect more of this type of request?
So I'm planning on writing a, a provision in the new engineering standards based on the, we're getting these types of requests a lot, underground storage, parking lot surface storage. So I imagine that the new stormwater standards are going to have provisions for both of those things. Underground storage, which is basically a bunch of pipes underneath the parking lot that store the water instead of in an open basin. That way it doesn't have to sit on the, on the surface of the parking lot. It could actually be underneath. The concern that we've had to this point is how do you keep that sediment from building up inside those pipes? So they have, there are now devices that you can put in the system that prevent that from happening. So that would be the idea is to require the, that stormwater quality device that would clean that water before it goes in there and you wouldn't get that sediment built up. But there will be some changes, a lot of changes made to the stormwater standards.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by clerk Posey, to approve the variance from the engineering standards for Hampton Manor Senior Living. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Moving on to public comment, this is our second public comment of the evening. This is for non-agenda items. If anyone present wishes to make a comment, please come to the right-hand side of the room where the microphone is, state your name and address for the record. Please remember you have a three-minute time limit. If anyone digitally which, or is remotely participating, please digitally raise your hand and you'll be called on.
Thank you, board members. My name is Richard Say. I live in Macomb, 24 Card area, and there's three things I like to bring up, suggestion or, or however you perceive to receive it. First of all, I'd like to thank the Macomb Township Board for reducing our taxes by 4% and no increase in our water bill and for the free park. But I would like to extend. But I would like to extend in addition to this, with all the new homes being built, mega homes, 300,000 to 400,000, and all the new businesses being built and uprising in our township, mainly on Card Road between 23, 22, 23 Mile Road by Fairchild, et cetera, et cetera. There's a lot of buildings going on. And with all this revenue that I believe is being generated, I think you could reduce our taxes a little more. But that's something to be thoughtful of. Secondly, I would like to propose to have a streetlight put on the corner here at our entrance off Broughton Road and 25. I come to the library, my wife and I, and it's pitch black. I mean, you've got all the lights here by the, by the rec center, all the lights here by our township and by the library, tons of lights. But you're coming in off 25, it's dark. And it's, and it's before the hockey rink. And I'd like to propose to have a couple of lights put there on the east and west corners of Broughton and the south side of 25 Mile Road, to be considered anyway. Last, but not least, on the recreation center, especially for seniors, I think it's overpriced. With our taxes that we're paying and, and for what it is worth, I think with all this other revenue generated, which I mentioned before, I think the price of that recreation should be lowered or even become free to the citizens of this township. Especially seniors, anyway, at least a reduction. I mean, we're paying the same rate as somebody that's working. And I would like to use that facility. I've taken my grandchildren there, and it cost me an arm and a leg. That's very high. And that's all I have to say. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Say. I appreciate your comments.
You're welcome. Have a blessed night.
You too. Anyone else present wish to speak?
Oh, I'm stuck. Hi, I'm really sorry. I'm Dory Vaskis Nolan, Executive Director of Carehouse. I'm a Macomb Township resident also. I had a bad information about the time of the public hearing, so I won't try to present now, but since I am here, I did want to thank you. Last year, you did allocate to us $3,000. And I do have statistics just to share with you to, just to let you know how valuable your, your support was, if I can share that.
Sure, you leave it with our attorney. We'll grab it after the meeting.
Thanks again.
You're welcome.
Do you know when you're allocating, or?
We don't yet. We'll make that decision.
Okay.
At the next meeting.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone remotely?
No, sir.
No. Alright, no more comment. We're going to move on to board comments. Trustee Lucido.
Nothing for me tonight.
Trustee Nevers.
Nothing for me tonight either.
You know I got something.
Trustee Oliver.
It's going to be about the tractor.
He's mad that it's not green.
We'll be on the tractor now.
Should be K, so should be John here.
So I just want to thank, I think it was Leon that might have started this, the special meeting where we all. I didn't know what to expect, but when I left, I was pleasingly happy to sit with the department heads, sit with Water and Sewer, sit with financing. It didn't feel like, it was so comfortable to speak with them and ask questions and take time. And they thoroughly went over everything for someone like me that I'm not here every day. So I just want to thank everyone involved and, and it was great. I just, I went away very, very satisfied. And that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver. Trustee Kuzmano.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer Gillette.
Thank you. Just like to make sure residents who may be watching are aware that this upcoming Monday, the 14th, is the last day to pay your property taxes without penalty, the winter property taxes. So I would encourage residents that have not yet paid to probably not put it in the mail at this point, because, you know, the mail's been so erratic. Rather to come either to Township Hall personally when, during open hours, or to put it in the night drop box located on the west side of Township Hall, or to pay online or pay by phone. So just encourage people to make sure they get there on time. We don't like to assess the penalties, but we have to if they're late.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Clerk Posey.
I would just like to say that we are currently preparing for the 2022 election cycle, and we are accepting applications for election workers to work on Election Day. Also, part-time and temp positions in the office, starting probably end of May through November. So if you have any high school or college students that would be home looking for a summer job, an internship, we also have that posted on our website, or anybody who's looking to make some extra money, please contact our office or go to our website and fill out the application and forward it to the clerk's office. That's all I have.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Two quick things. I just want to remind everybody that February 21st is President's Day, and the township's offices will be closed that day. So if you have any business, please come back on Tuesday, the 22nd. I do want to make mention of the same thing Trustee Oliver did, that those who maybe didn't see the posting, we did have an open meeting on Friday as a working session where the seven board members got together. And we had very meaningful discussions about some topics that we don't normally have the opportunity to have in the public way with the seven of us present. I found it to be very worthwhile. I found out some of the inclinations of the board members I didn't previously know, some things that we, I think we agreed in principle to start working towards. Hopefully, the department heads that participated found it equally helpful and to get guidance directly from the seven of us, I think is very valuable. And I got to say, I'm appreciative of, after every meeting, about how well the seven of us continue to work together and a whole day sitting with each other. I didn't think I'd get through without killing Leon, but I actually did. And it went great. And, you know, I'm proud of the seven of us. We're, you know, one of my stated intentions from day one was that the seven of us would demonstrate what good government looks like, and I think we did that Friday. So, that's all I got to say. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, who got that?
Mr. Kuzmano.
You got the second, who got the motion? Any discussion? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Kuzmano, to adjourn the meeting. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.